While we're getting ready to start, if folks, let me share with you that while we do the scout troops doing the pledge and the singing and then also the inauguration of myself and the two council members, people in the audience are encouraged to take all the photographs you want. We encourage you to take them while the ceremonies are going on. So don't be shy and just get up and get us wherever you want to be and take the photos. All right? While the judges are swearing in the various council members. With that, please allow me to call to order Ferndale City Council meeting of Monday, January the 11th, 2010. I would like to invite first Cub Scout Troop 1221 and Brownie Troop 73570 to come in and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much. Will the audience and all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And you folks lead us in the pledge.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Now if the scouts and brownies would turn around and the brownies have a song they'd like to sing for us tonight.
Okay, my song starters. One, two, three.
(Singing) I got something in my pocket, it won't hurt my face. I'm reading your course, taking you to the place.
(Singing) I'm gonna sit here, I wanna run around, and look it out and put it on, it's a great big brownie smile.
Thank you again Cub Scout 1221 and Brownie Troop 73570. Thanks for being here tonight, kids. You look great. One more round of applause for our young people. If I may now invite Father Ed Pruse, representing St. James Catholic Church, and I've asked the Father to lead us in an invocation tonight.
And I thank God for this opportunity and I thank the Mayor for his invitation. Almighty and most wonderful God, our Father, please bless our community of Ferndale and guide these men and women chosen to be our leaders and your representatives. Please give them your gifts for their mission. Give them the gift of wisdom that they might turn to you for guidance and recognize your presence in all their plans and decisions. Give them the gift of understanding that they will recognize that we are all children of God. Give them the gift of knowledge that they may never cease to study and learn what is needed to help our community live in peace and prosperity. Give them the gift of right judgment that they may always be just and fair in the decisions that they were called upon to make. Give them the gift of courage that they will never fear to use their talents and recognize the talents of those who reach out to them. Give them the strength to be true to you, to themselves, and to be honest with the people they serve. Give them the gift of reverence for all life and property that is entrusted to them. Give them the gift of awe and amazement that comes when they work together in harmony. Help them to see that when we all work together, great things can happen. Things that we could never hope to achieve individually. Almighty God, you have entrusted to these women and men the gift of leadership. We, the citizens and coworkers of this community, pray for them. You have given us all this new year, 2010. Please guide us all today that we might live in harmony and peace, sharing our God-given talents with each other for your glory and for the good of the community of Ferndale. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Father Ed. We have with us tonight our judges Keith Hunt and Joseph Longo, who will be swearing in myself, Councilman Galloway, and Councilwoman Piana. Would you two join us? Join me up front. I don't think there's any problem anyone hearing my voice, is there? No? All right. Mr. Mayor, would you raise your right hand? Do you, Craig Covey, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of this state, and the Charter of the City of Ferndale, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of Mayor in and for the City of Ferndale, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, to the best of your ability?
Yes, sir, I do.
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor. It's good to have you back. Scott, please raise your right hand.
Do you, Scott Galloway, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of this state, and the Charter of the City of Ferndale, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of city council member and inform the City of Ferndale, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, to the best of your ability?
I will.
Congratulations.
Ready, Melanie?
I am.
All right. Could you please raise your right hand? Do you, Melanie Piana, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the Charter of the City of Ferndale, that you will faithfully discharge the duties of city council member in and for the City of Ferndale, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, to the best of your ability?
I do.
Congratulations and well. Thank you, Judge Hunt and Judge Longo. Thank you. Madam Clerk, is the next item a swearing in of the Library Board?
Certainly.
If I then could ask for Patrick Dengate, Sarah Farmley, and John Stewart to come forward.
Congratulations.
(Inaudible)
Come on up, Patrick, everybody. Start at the beginning.
I, Patrick Dengate.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter of the City of Ferndale.
And the Charter of the City of Ferndale.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of Library Board Director.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of Library Board Director.
In and for the City of Ferndale.
In and for the City of Ferndale.
County of Oakland.
County of Oakland.
And the State of Michigan to the best of my ability.
And the State of Michigan to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. You go again.
I, Sarah Farmley.
I, Sarah Farmley.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter of the City of Ferndale.
And the Charter of the City of Ferndale.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
of Library Board Director.
of Library Board Director.
in and for the City of Ferndale.
in and for the City of Ferndale.
County of Oakland.
County of Oakland.
And the State of Michigan to the best of my ability.
And the State of Michigan to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. I, John Stewart. Stewart. I, John Stewart. Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter of the City of Ferndale.
Charter of the City of Ferndale.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of Library Board Director.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of Library Board Director.
in and for the City of Ferndale.
In and for the City of Ferndale.
The County of Oakland.
County of Oakland.
And the State of Michigan to the best of my ability.
And the State of Michigan to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
We have the roll call of the 42nd Ferndale City Council.
Very good. Please do so.
Councilmember Baker, here. Galloway.
Here.
Lennon.
Here.
Piana, here. And Mayor Covey.
Here. We are all accounted for. Next item, Madam Clerk.
We have a presentation by the Ferndale Public Schools.
Thank you. Or do we have the approval of the agenda?
I'm sorry, we have the approval of the agenda.
And I mixed up the order. I apologize for that. Are there any changes or requests to be made to the agenda for tonight's meeting?
Your Honor, I have one. Under Consent Item E1, the reappointment of Peggy Snow and Annette Dujia to the Beautification Committee. Ms. Dujia does not wish to be reappointed.
Okay. We will select Annette Dujia for this moment, but leave Peggy Snow on there?
Yes.
Of course. And that's a change to Item E1. I think the regular agenda, we'll leave as is as well. There was a thought of moving things around, but we'll leave it as it is. With that, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I do.
Councilwoman, Councilman Lennon, seconded by Baker, to approve the agenda. Madam Clerk.
You're right there. Councilmembers Baker.
Yes.
Galloway.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
And Mayor Covey.
Yes, as well. Then we have the presentation first by the Ferndale Public Schools.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Stillger, Communication Specialist for Ferndale Public Schools. I have a couple of fantastic events to share with the community tonight. On Wednesday, January 27th, we are having a community breakfast. We are inviting community members, realtors, business owners, anyone who is interested in learning more about the Ferndale Schools. We are having presentations from high school students from both of our high schools, parents, district principals, and you'll have an opportunity to meet the students, meet the administrators, learn more about what we have to offer to our community, and enjoy a nice breakfast. There are flyers, look like this, that are around town. Again, that's Wednesday, January 27th, at 9:30 a.m. at Ferndale High School. If you're interested in coming, please RSVP to 248-586-8651. On January 30th, we have our annual district-wide showcase, called Extravaganza. Flyers like this are around town. And this year, we've combined our all-city concerts with our Extravaganza event, which means we have three large concerts that are free to the community. We have band, orchestra, and choir. Those are scheduled at 1:00, 4:00, and 7:00 p.m. Throughout, while the concerts are going on in the Commons, we are having our, what we call "See How We Learn" presentations. So teachers will be there showing what they do in the classroom with their students. We'll have our curriculum team there explaining what we have done to change how we teach and talk about our rising test scores. And they'll have, we'll have many presentations from different student groups and musical groups also in the Commons. We invite the entire community to come out. That is Saturday, January 30th, at Ferndale High School in the Commons and in the gym. From 12 to 4 p.m. is the See How We Learn in the Commons, and from, at 1:00, 4:00, and 7:00, are concerts in the gym. So we invite everyone to come out.
Thanks, Jessica. Great. Sounds like a great day. We appreciate the schools coming tonight. Next item, Madam Clerk.
A presentation of the Holiday Light Awards.
Peggy Snow?
Good evening, everyone. In December, we always look, the Beautification Commission always looks forward to riding around and looking at the holiday lights in the city. Houses are nominated, and one of our members routes them out. And we ride around in each section. We give each section of the city an award in one business. And this year, I thought we really had a lot to look at. And I thought that so many of them were like above what we usually see. And we picked the four best in the whole city. So the commercial one goes to Toast at 23144 Woodward. I don't know if anyone is here, but anyway, we've, they are a little bit off the busy intersection of Nine Mile and Woodward. And they had a very nice display. And so we thought we would recognize them. And the residential one is Mark Blackwell at Rick Armstrong at 986 Alberta. They had a beautiful, beautiful display. We saw so many, it's hard for me to remember what each one looked like, but I know that all of the ones we selected were just really above and beyond this year. Very, very nice. And the next one was Russell Williams and Darren Allen at 2098 Morehouse. Maybe they couldn't come this evening. The next one is Kathy Conti and Phil Dempsey at 529 West Woodland. They also had a very, very nice display. There were a number of houses in that area. We kept going back and forth over which one was the best and...
This is pretty neat. It says, "In recognition of outstanding achievement in decorating this property with a festive holiday display, and thereby making Ferndale a more attractive place in which to live and work." Congratulations.
Roseanne at the City Yard makes up the certificates, and she does a wonderful job. And she also calls me and reminds me to sign them before we get here tonight. So she does a lot of things to help me out. And the last residential one is Luann Jones and Timothy Jones and Danielle Finley at 635 East Saratoga. They were all out on the porch when we rode by. And it was kind of hard because they, "Oh, did we win?" Well, we hadn't selected anybody yet. So they had to wait for me to come back around and tell them.
It must have been nice, a very nice preparation.
I did want to say too that we have a couple of openings on the Beautification Commission. If anybody's interested in joining, all they do have to is come up to the Clerk's office and contact her and fill out a form. And it's, we're a fun commission. We do a lot of fun things. We do the perennial exchange, and we judge the houses in the summertime. And it's just, it's a lot of fun. And if you're interested in joining, we'd love to have you. Thank you.
Thanks, Peggy. Thanks, Peggy. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Your Honor, we have call to audience.
The call to the audience is a half hour reserved at the beginning of the meeting. More later if we run out of time. It's for folks to speak on any issue they wish that is not on the upcoming agenda. We ask that you keep your remarks to three minutes or less, that you share your name either verbally or written in the back, and that we do ask that you respect the integrity of all of the individuals and use all proper decorum. Anyone wish to speak tonight?
Good evening. My name is Brendan Frey. Last spring, you, the council and mayor, appointed me as Ferndale's millennial delegate to the Millennial Mayor's Congress, which is a partnership of cities and villages and townships in the metro Detroit area, working to promote sustainable regional development for metro Detroit. So I'm here just to update you on what's been going on the past six months. We, as a congress, we operate by consensus basis. We chose for the issue for this year to focus on fiscal and environmental sustainability. That was at the second meeting of the commission. The first meeting, we adopted a charter. And then I've also been appointed to the Executive Committee of the Millennial Mayor's Congress. But we, as an executive committee, worked on identifying some specific protocols to recommend to the entire Congress. And in December, the Congress adopted its first protocol, which is Energy Savings Protocol, set a goal of reducing city purchases of energy from non-renewable sources by 25 percent from 2005 levels by 2015. And there's a second part of the protocol, which is a goal of reducing energy purchases from all other, of all other sources, such as businesses and residential purchases of energy from non-renewable sources by over 5 percent from 2005 levels by 2015. As you all know, Ferndale's already taken a lot of steps in these areas, and is, so I think these goals are coordinated with priorities that Ferndale has already adopted. But we'll be moving forward as a congress in identifying the baseline data that we, that we need to move forward and identifying specific areas where we can reduce our energy purchases, focusing on energy efficiency and other things of that nature. We're also working on developing an economic development protocol, which we should be adopting within the next couple of months. Thank you.
Thank you, Brendan. I appreciate your work.
Good evening, Council. Christina Sheperdousias, Ferndale DDA Executive Director. I'm here tonight just to invite the public, and especially council members, to join us on this Thursday, Thursday night, January 14th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. for the Preserve America Wayfinding Community Input Session. It's the second of our community input sessions. And the chosen design from our last input session will be revealed further, as well as some refinements that have been made to it. And we want everyone's input in helping to bring about the best product possible for our wayfinding project. It will be held at Blooms by JR Designs, which is at 503 East Nine Mile. Again, that's from 7:00 to 9:00 on Thursday night.
Thank you, Christina.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Julie Glazier, and I sit on the Publicity Committee for Ferndale Youth Assistance. I'm here tonight to provide you with information on upcoming events connected with or sponsored by Youth Assistance. On Wednesday, January 20th, Ferndale Youth Assistance is hosting a free Love &amp; Logic seminar for parents of kindergarteners through 5th grade. It will be held at the Media Center in Ferndale High School starting at 6:00 p.m. If you're interested in attending, please contact Ferndale Youth Assistance at 248-586-8700. Also, please start preparing for the Blues Festival, which starts January 29th. We need volunteers and participation. Thank you very much, and have a great night.
Thank you, Julie. We will talk more about the Blues Festival on the call to council. Larry Mills has brought us the poster, which you here tonight are the first to see. So that's exciting, and that's coming up. Any other folks like to share during call to audience? If not, we will close that and move, Madam Clerk, to the consent agenda.
Consent agenda item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 28th, 2009. B, approval to adopt Ordinance Number 1086 to amend Chapter 18 Traffic and Motor Vehicle Code to codify parts of Ordinance Number 435, and add Article X Automobile Parking System to the Ferndale Code, being sections 18-200 through 18-211. Item C, adoption of a resolution supporting House Bill 5325. Item D, adoption of a resolution honoring Ferndale American Legion Post 330. Item E, approval of reappointments to city boards and commissions, Peggy Snow to the Beautification Commission, Lynn Nichols and Blair Simmons to the Board of Canvassers, Judy Palmer to the Board of Zoning Appeals, Derek Delacorte, Robert Sadowski, and Sharon Stoll to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, and Dennis Hepner to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Item F, approval of a maintenance contract between the city and the Ferndale Public Library. Item G, approval of the invoice of $8,345 of the Markers Group for setting up and printing 10,900 copies of the 2010 DPW calendar. Approval of the invoice of $2,660 and of $1,993 of Down Under Municipal Services for cleaning and filming 14 private sewer laterals. Item I, approval of the quote of $15,909 of Jack O'Haney Supplies Incorporated to replace the section pump on the 2007 Sewer Vector Vehicle Number 1260. And item J, approval of the bills and payrolls certified by the city manager to be paid, subject to review by the Council Finance Committee.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Which items would any council members or public like to remove for further discussion?
Your Honor, I'd like to move Item G.
Item G, as in George, so moved. Anything else? If not a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the one exception of Item G?
So moved.
Councilwoman Baker, supported by Councilman Galloway. Discussion, Madam Clerk.
Councilmembers Galloway.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
And Mayor Covey.
Yes, that passes unanimously. Next item?
We have the regular agenda item A, appointment of Salvatore Muscelli to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Thank you. That is a mayoral appointment. Salvatore Muscelli has been an alternate member of the BZA. Is he in the audience tonight?
I don't see him.
Don't see him. But I would look for a motion to, a second to...
So move, Your Honor, to appoint Salvatore to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
And I second.
Thank you. Motion made by Lennon, seconded by Piana. Discussion, Madam Clerk.
Councilmembers Lennon.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Galloway.
Yes.
And Mayor Covey.
Yes, as well. That is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Muscelli. And later on, Mr. Bruner will give us dates for the annual appreciation night, where we thank and invite all of our boards and commission volunteers to come, including Mr. Muscelli. Next item, Madam Clerk.
We have appointment of council members to boards and commissions.
Thank you. While this looks like a long list and a lot to do, it could go smoothly. I know I did ask council members to think about which items they wanted to be on. It's important that each of us try to share and take different memberships on these commissions and committees, and that by assisting the committees, but also sharing the load among the five of us. So if I may, let me start, Madam Clerk, with the first item, boards and commissions, mayor pro tem position. Are there any nominations?
I nominate, oh, I was gonna nominate Kate Baker. She has yet to be mayor pro tem on this council, and it's my understanding that council rotates on the pro tem position. So I nominate Kate Baker. I think she'd do a great job when you are unavailable.
I'd support that motion with...
Did you get all that motion, Cheryl, in there?
Thank you, Councilman Galloway, for seconding Councilwoman Piana's motion. Any discussion? And if I don't hear from a councilman saying a member that I don't want a position, then we'll assume they do. And so, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmembers Piana.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Galloway.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
And Mayor Covey.
Yes. Welcome, Mayor Pro Tem Baker.
Thank you.
Next item, Board of Zoning Appeals, the BZA.
I move that we reappoint, well, I guess it's...
I move that we reappoint, well, I guess it's not a reappointment because she wasn't a councilperson before, but I would move that Melanie Piana be our representative on the BZA.
Support. Motion made and seconded. Madam Clerk, do you need me to repeat the names, or will you get them when I...
If I don't get them, I will ask.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded. Councilwoman Piana on the BZA. Vote, please.
Certainly, I'm sorry, bear with me, I am working on new software tonight.
You're cool.
Councilmembers Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Covey.
Yes, that's unanimous. Next item is the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority.
I believe Councilman Galloway's been serving on this as it was his area of legal expertise, so I would move that we reappoint Councilman Galloway to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Madam Clerk?
And that was for Galloway?
Yes, ma'am.
And who seconded that?
Lennon.
Lennon seconded.
Councilmembers Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
And Mayor Covey.
Yes, as well. In our list, we'll see liaison committees, which are made up of two council members for each of the appointees, the appointees including the city clerk, the city manager, the police chief, the fire chief. I don't think we have one for the city attorney. We could always create one if we need to. First item, then, is City Clerk Liaison Committee.
This was Councilwoman Gumbelton and I in the past. I would suggest, I mean, if we wanted to switch things up, I don't know if people are interested, I would move that Scott and Mike, because you guys haven't been liaisons to Cheryl.
Goodbye, me.
I take that as a motion for Lennon and Galloway to be the liaison. Is there a second to Baker's motion? Support. Galloway seconds. Madam Clerk.
Councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
And Mayor Covey.
Yes. Next one is the City Manager Liaison Committee. It is currently Galloway and Lennon. I'm happy to sit on that one with someone if they wish.
As am I, and I think Melanie was interested in this one, too, so...
That's fine, then, your motion.
Okay, I would move that Melanie and I sit on the City Manager Liaison Committee.
Seconded by Lennon, motion by Baker. Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
And Mayor Covey.
Yes, that passes as well. The next one is the Construction Board of Appeals. It is currently Councilman Lennon. I believe he's willing to stay on that committee.
I am.
And I move to reappoint Councilman Lennon to the Construction Board of Appeals.
Support. Motion Baker, second Galloway, for Lennon on the Construction Board. Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Covey.
Yes, passes unanimously. The next item is the Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees. I will remind you that there's also the Police and Fire Pension System. I'm currently on that and would stay on it, or I'd be willing to go on the retirement system unless someone else is willing or interested.
I've been on it two years, I'm happy to rotate, so I would move that Mayor Covey be our representative on the Employee Retirement Board of Trustees.
Your Honor, you're a member of the Police and Fire Pension Board by virtue of your office, so you can't get off of it.
Oh, you know what? It should be someone else, then, because they're very similar. No, my fault.
Yeah, I didn't realize.
My fault.
I can continue, then, I would nominate myself.
Is there a second?
Second.
Lennon seconds Baker's motion for her to be on the Employees Retirement System Board. Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
And Mayor Covey.
Yes, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Brunner, for assisting us. The next item is Ferndale Community Foundation. This, of course, is the nonprofit community foundation, started a number of years ago. Councilwoman Gumbelton was on that, so there is an opening. I've been on it since its founding and enjoy it a lot, so I'd be willing to stay on it again. We would want one other...
Am I allowed to nominate myself?
Yes, ma'am.
I nominate Melanie Piana.
Support.
And Mayor Covey.
Thank you. I would nominate you, but I'm not allowed to nominate as mayor, so I appreciate, so you're nominating yourself and me?
Yes.
And the second was from Baker, for the foundation. Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Mayor Covey.
Yes, thank you very much. Ferndale Public Schools Superintendent Advisory Committee. That's a new one.
That is a new one.
Councilwoman Gumbelton was on this last year.
I heard Scott say he's interested in that. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second by Piana, to have Scott be our Public Schools Superintendent Advisory Committee member. Motion made and seconded. Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Mayor Covey.
Yes, as well. Next one is Finance Committee. Councilman Galloway, I know, is on that now. I think he's done a great job.
I'm currently on that, too, Your Honor.
Do you want to stay on?
I'd like to stay on.
Do you mind staying on?
Unless somebody else wants it, yep, I'm happy to stay on.
Anyone else want that one?
If you and Mike want.
All right, then a motion for Galloway and Lennon to be reappointed.
So moved.
Seconded by?
Second.
Piana. We're almost halfway through this, audience, so this is how the sausage is made. Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Mayor Covey.
Yes, thank you. It's going very smooth, actually. I was at one meeting years ago when this took forever, but I appreciate everyone being ready to step up to the plate. Next item, I believe, is the?
Fire Chief Liaison.
Fire Chief Liaison.
This is a committee that I served on with Councilwoman Gumbelton. I would like to stay on it, as we've got some, I'm getting to know my colleagues in Madison Heights and Hazel Park better, and we've got some opportunities for collaboration there. So I would move that Councilwoman Piana and I be on the Fire Chief Liaison Committee.
Very good. Second. Support. Galloway seconds Baker's motion for Baker and Piana to be the Fire Chief Liaison. It's nice of you to...
She already knows all the council members.
It's nice of you to step up to that. Well, I know you're interested in fire departments. Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Galloway?
I'm sorry, hey, I have a weakness.
Are we ready to vote? Councilmembers Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Covey.
Yes, as well, thank you. Next item is the Highway Committee. Highway Committee is made up currently of two, including the mayor and Lennon. Is that a nature of the mayor on that one?
It is not.
It is not? I don't mind staying on it.
How do you do, Your Honor?
I would move that we appoint Councilman Lennon and Mayor Covey to the Highway Committee, even though we don't know what it does.
It's secretive, we're not gonna tell you.
It's my understanding of going through a reconfiguration.
We actually met once this year, and it had to do with the sidewalk replacement program. If anyone else wants on it, it's cool, but there is a motion. Madam Clerk?
Did we have a second?
Second.
I don't remember. Yes, Piana seconds Baker's motion.
Okay, councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
And Mayor Covey.
Yes, passes unanimously. Next item is the Liquor License Review Committee. There's two members on it, they are currently...
One, there's one.
I'm sorry.
There's just one.
I should've made this bigger.
Thank you. Hello.
I would move that we appoint Scott to the Scott Councilman Galloway Liquor License Review Committee.
Support.
He was interested as part of this legal...
It's an important committee. Councilman Galloway seconds the motion by Baker. Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
And Mayor Covey.
Yes, passes unanimously. Next item is Ordnance Committee.
I want to stay on that.
Mike and I have been on that. You want to continue on that, Mike?
I would like to.
All right, I would move that Councilman Galloway and Councilman Lennon be appointed to the Ordnance Committee.
Support.
Motion made and seconded. Galloway, Baker. Motion for Lennon and Galloway. Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
And Mayor Covey.
Yes, passes unanimously. Next item is the Planning Commission. Again, an important one, Councilwoman?
Yeah, I was just going to volunteer myself to stay on it as we finish the zoning ordinance rewrite.
Very good.
I support that.
That's good. We need two members. Don't we? I'm sorry, I can't read these little tiny numbers, I'm just gonna give up.
Sorry.
So, motion for Baker to be on the Planning Commission.
Councilmembers Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Mayor Covey.
Yes, passes unanimously. Next item, Pleasant Ridge Fire Contract Committee. It's one member, I believe.
Plus the mayor.
Plus the mayor.
Yeah. You want to go on this, ma'am?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
You ought to, I'm gonna say, okay.
All right, then, the motion is, is the motion for Covey and Galloway to be on the fire?
The motion is for Covey and Galloway to be on the Pleasant Ridge Fire Contract Committee.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Yep.
And there was a second by?
Seven.
Lennon. They still meet at 7:30 in the morning?
That's right, maybe, that's how I got my experience on that, mayor, when I was mayor pro tem.
I did it for a few years, and I'll do it again if I have to. All right, Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Mayor Covey.
Yes, passes unanimously. Police and Fire Retirement System, one plus the mayor, so I will stay on that. We need one other person, it was Tomico.
I would move that the mayor and Councilman Galloway sit on the Police and Fire Retirement System Board of Trustees.
Support. Motion made and seconded. Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Covey.
Yes, that passes unanimously. Next item is the Police Chief Liaison Committee.
Yeah, no.
It has two members, it's currently myself, and it was Gumbelton, so we, I would like to stay on that, I'm not on any liaison committees at this point. Is there one other member?
Do you want police liaison? All right, I would move that Councilman Lennon and Mayor Covey sit on the Police Liaison Committee.
Support. There's a second by Alcee Galloway on that, to have Lennon and Covey be the Police Chief Liaison. Madam Clerk?
I'm sorry, it was Lennon and?
Lennon and Covey. The motion was...
Okay, I'm sorry.
Councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Mayor Covey.
Yes, that passed unanimously. The second of the last item is the Sidewalk Hardship Committee.
Is that just the mayor, or is it the mayor and a councilperson?
I don't think it has...
Or was it the mayor, but not by virtue of office?
It does not have to be the mayor.
Okay.
I've done it for 11 years, I don't mind doing it again, but if someone else wants it, but I'll do it again.
I would then move that we reappoint Mayor Covey to the Sidewalk Hardship Committee.
Support, seconded by Galloway, motion by Baker. Covey on the Hardship Sidewalk Committee. Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Mayor Covey.
Yes, that passed unanimously. Last one I have, at least on this list of our agenda, is the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, SEMCOG. One member is needed.
I move that we appoint Councilwoman Piana as our delegate, and City Manager Brunner as our alternate to the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments.
Second. Well done. Motion made and seconded by Baker and Lennon. Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Mayor Covey?
Yes, passes unanimously. Thank you. That wasn't bad. Thank you, councilmembers, for, uh, sharing those and being very efficient at it. Next item, Madam Clerk?
We have regular agenda item C, consideration of revisions to the special event policy.
Thank you. Um, Mr., Mr., Madam Clerk, do you wanna introduce again, or from one different?
Yes, I will take care of it if I can just a minute.
All right, no rush.
Sorry about that. Um, at the last council meeting, council, um, reviewed our recommendations and adopted several of them, but, uh, voted to table discussion and, and action on the proposed fees to this meeting. The special event committee, um, met again and reviewed, um, council's various concerns and the revisions that we are now suggesting. Um, whereas previously, we were proposing a flat fee of a hundred dollars for, um, all events in the downtown for the trash compactors. We're now recommending that, um, event organizers be charged only in the event that their event fills the trash compactor and come Monday morning, we have to bring in a replacement to handle the overflow, and then we would charge them based on that actual cost, which would be approximately ninety to a hundred and twenty dollars, depending on the size of the replacement, um, container.
May I ask a quick question?
Certainly.
So, does this mean that events that, you know, perhaps recycle a large amount of their, um, their waste and don't use the city trash compactor, then would not?
They would not pay anything.
Thank you.
Um, the second, um, fee that was of some concern was the proposed fee of two hundred and fifty dollars for applicants requesting alcohol sales. The committee is recommending now that we downgrade that fee to a hundred and twenty-five, which covers costs of one hour of time for Police Lieutenant Bowle and Fire Marshal Batten to perform the investigations required by the MLCC. For recurring events, an hour for each of them is a reasonable amount of time. For new events, they can spend three or four hours, but we're gonna go with, with the hour standard time, so that would be a hundred and twenty-five for that alcohol fee.
Thank you.
Previously, we had proposed a flat two hundred dollar fee for, um, installation of banners, um, crossing roads, and two hundred and fifty for light pole banner installation fees. The committee discussed this at length, and, um, the recommendation I'm bringing to you from the committee is that we charge actual costs after the event, but in actually looking at what those costs might be, Sean Slocum from the DPW put together an estimate, and I actually think the two hundred dollars would be the better deal for the applicants. Um, hanging one banner plus taking it down, um, would be closer to two hundred and fifty dollars, and my understanding is that most events that hang a banner across Nine Mile hang two, so, you know, now you're talking between four and five hundred dollars actual costs, so council might wanna consider sticking with the original fees. Um, the light pole banners are actually installed in cooperation with the DDA, um, and again, they would be charging an hourly rate, and it may be more cost-effective for the organizers if we went with the two fifty flat fee, but that's up for council to decide. And lastly, we had, um, the DDA had brought forth a proposal, all right, take that back, going back to the application fees that council approved as part of the fiscal, um, year 2010 fee schedule of twenty-five to four hundred dollars. Um, the committee is recommending that those do not change, that they remain in place as is. Um, in my notes, you can see that we've got, um, costs by my office, not just for reviewing, but for scheduling, um, meetings, doing minutes, preparing things for council, bringing it forward, and then our special event committee meeting is made up of department heads and a, and a one-hour meeting, which would be a very short special event committee meeting, comes out to about three hundred and fifty dollars just for the committee members' time. Um, so smaller events are getting a bargain, larger events are probably also getting a bargain at that rate. And then lastly, the council is, um, concerned with the proposed fee from the DDA of five hundred dollars, um, for various concerns they had, mostly related to landscape maintenance. I think Christina is here tonight. They went back to their board on Thursday. They held a special meeting just to discuss this, and they came up, um, with recommended labor costs, per hour labor costs, to be billed after the fact, so they'd be actual costs, and those were provided to you in your Friday packets. Did everyone get those?
Yes, they were.
Okay. Um, so that is what we're bringing forward tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Well done. Um, Christina, the, my understanding is that there would be zero fee from the DDA automatically in advance of the event, but afterwards, if there were repairs needed to the planters or other costs, that's when costs would be, uh, assigned?
Right, any maintenance costs for cleaning up, uh, in, like, tree wall areas, landscape beds, basically places where the sweeper cannot get to, where it really requires man labor.
Makes sense. Person labor, sure. All right. Well, thank you for the introduction. Um, let's start with councilmembers, to see if you have any questions. Um, I don't have any questions.
I, I don't, Mayor. I immediately self-assess the clerk went over this last week, and, um, you know, I spoke to Christina, and I'm pleased more than I was on the last meeting.
I am too. Councilwoman Baker, anything?
Um, it's not so much a question, so we'll wait until we have?
A motion. Any requests for information from the audience?
Greetings, Mayor Covey, and to the rest of the honorable, honorable body. I'm Robert D. Thomas of two, 2070 Morehouse Street in Ferndale. I stand here today representing Triangle Foundation in an effort to ask the city of Ferndale to rethink and ultimately refrain from imposing additional event-specific fees. Triangle Foundation is responsible, uh, with the help of many dedicated volunteers and important community partnerships, uh, for the Pride Festival, which takes place in downtown Ferndale.
Hey, Robert?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Um, this portion of the meeting is where we allow folks to ask questions, if they had any questions about what was just presented.
Okay.
I'm guessing, um, that you have thoughts on a possible motion that might be made?
Mm-hmm.
And that would be much more appropriate time to speak on that, right, sir?
So, wait to answer the motion?
Just a minute.
If?
If you just hold off for a second, and I think you'll be pleased, well, you might be pleased with what we do.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Robert. Um, if there are no further requests for information, then I'd be looking for a motion. We would be looking for a motion.
Um, well, here's my motion. Oh, wait, hold on. Sorry, technical difficulty. I move that we adopt items number two, three, four, and six of the updated special event application policy.
Second.
And I'll give you my, I'll give you my reasons why. I just left out the, um,
Five?
Application fee that goes across the board.
Is there a?
Should I?
Question regarding the motion? Two, three, five, and six?
Two, three, four, and six.
Two, three, four, and six. Um, if we enact six, what are we enacting? Um, is that the, uh, hourly rate here for the things rather than the five hundred?
Correct.
The thing is under separate cover, okay?
Yes.
So, six referencing the January 2010 addendum to Agenda Item 11C.
That was my intention.
Okay.
I can, I attended this DDA meeting, um,
Oh, we need a second.
Oh, sorry.
We got one, Lennon.
Oh, great, okay.
What's? Second. Go ahead, Melanie.
Um, I attended the DDA special meeting that talked about these specific fees, and I think, um, the solution that the DDA came up with, with the business owners and event leaders that were there, I think, solved this issue of the, uh, flat rate fee of the five hundred, and, um, what we were trying to do is, um, allow event coordinators to, um, offset the cost of, um, doing, um, landscape repair or garbage collection through their volunteer network on the event. Uh, in the event that they are unable to, um, do that with their volunteer network, um, shortly after the event is ended, this is when the, the DDA would, um, do an assessment and provide, um, uh, an invoice for those services rendered.
Sure.
I think that's a great compromise, um, and I think it will work for, you know, several of the events that we know do a lot of recycling and, and have a lot of Ferndale-based, um, volunteers. I think that's a, that's a great compromise. Um, the one that I omitted, which was the straight application fee, which I do realize we approved as part of our fee schedule, um, at the beginning of our fiscal year, um, I omitted it mainly so that I could, um, just ask council if this is the type of fee that we would like to, I don't know if revisit is the, is the right word. Perhaps it's, it's something that I hadn't completely thought through when we went through the fee schedule, but now that I see it, um, as applied, I'm, it, it, it just seems that there are, you know, a few things that perhaps we can still afford to absorb as the cost of doing business. Um, if you guys don't feel that way, we, we can move to do, to, to add number five back in, but just wanted to leave it out so we have that discussion.
That's okay. Um, the motion, of course, is to adopt two, three, four, and six. Recall that last meeting, we adopted other parts of this, uh, policy, and so I was gonna ask you why, and you're saying why. Now, item five is currently in effect.
Yes.
All right.
But had not ever been assessed before.
And so we can address that, uh, after this motion, or at a later date, whichever you decide, because it is in effect now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, any, any other questions for, uh, the councilwoman, or thoughts, and, uh, I would just say again that I appreciate the staff time that went into this. I appreciate particularly the members of the clerk's office and the DDA going back and, and looking again, uh, and lowering many of these fees, uh, or lowering some of them. We do need to, of course, start to get back some of these costs as we approach a very, very tight budget this coming year. So this, I think, is a good compromise in the sense that, um, it raises fees slightly for organizations putting on big events, but not, you know, in a large way, not in a hardship way, um, that could hurt other organizations, but instead would, would assist the city in a partnership putting on these special events. Other comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that the, um, this was a two-year process. Um, it was a very collaborative effort to make sure that we get a very comprehensive ordinance, and really, we went from two and a half pages to, what, twenty-eight? So, um, that's how comprehensive this application is, and so it's to remove, um, assumptions and misunderstandings between the city as well as the event organizers, and I think this protects both parties, um, better than ever, so.
Thanks, Councilman. Anything? No, good for now.
And if I could just ask a question about my motion, um, just, just to make sure I didn't goof anything up. My intention was to not include number five, knowing that it was still in the fee schedule, so even if we don't vote on it, unless we rescind it, it does still exist.
Sure.
Okay.
Gotcha.
That was?
Mr. Thomas, would you like to share any thoughts? Or Mr. Wade, or, or anyone else? Nice to see you all.
Okay. Again, I stand here representing Triangle Foundation. Um, just to let you guys know again, Triangle Foundation is responsible with the help of de, many dedicated volunteers and important community partnerships for the Pride Festival, which takes place in downtown Ferndale. I'm certain that, uh, the tens of thousands of visitors and residents of this city enjoy the safe, clean neighborhood, as well as the easily accessible central location of this event. Moreover, most, if not all, people enjoy the welcoming atmosphere and positive energy exuded by the businesses which make themselves available during this time, or during the time of pride. With the many other municipalities inquiring each year about the festival being held within their limits, and our dedication to keep our attendees' preferences first, by keeping it here in Ferndale, we hope that you will exercise that same dedication to a group that cares about keeping this event here in Ferndale. We cannot afford additional costs in, in, in already unpredictable economic environment. We truly want to remain within the cities, uh, of Ferndale's long-term business plan, and we say no to any fees.
Thank you.
Good evening, David Wade with, um, Motor City Pride, the Triangle Foundation. Um, the city clerk does have, um, I put together a cost of what we paid last year for the city with the rates. Um, with your generous sponsorship last year, it really helped us out with the festival. Our, our goal, and as we're going through with the planning, is not to ask for that type of level of support, but these fees, in addition to that support, would bring our bill to the city at this point at about thirteen thousand dollars, where last year, we paid about sixty-five hundred dollars in costs. Um, these fees with what I, what I took down of the modifications would add about thirteen hundred and twenty-five dollars, um, which, in the whole scheme of things, isn't a lot, but it does all add up when we're putting back in, uh, taking out or putting in, however you wanna say that, the five thousand dollars that you helped us with the festival last year. At a time when some cities are supporting events that come to their cities, um, I hope that we don't price ourselves out of being able to continue to have, uh, a very safe and, um, affirming event for the community. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Wade. And my thoughts again on this would be that it, it is a bummer that we have to raise some fees, but they're gonna go up far less than they were gonna go up two weeks ago.
Mm-hmm.
And that there, there may well be ways that we can lower these fees. For example, you know, by not putting up banners, you might save, uh, seven, seven hundred dollars. Um, by getting volunteers to make sure that we get all the litter, not just for Motor Pride, but for DIY, or any of the other festivals, that we might be able to save five hundred dollars by getting volunteers to, you know, go through the flower pots and, and pick up any pop cans or what have you.
And the liquor license application, we've just lowered to one twenty-five across the board.
We lowered that as well, so we, we understand, we hear you. Other thoughts on the motion? All right. If there are no other thoughts, or questions, or comments, then, uh, there was a second, right?
There was.
We have a motion? Go ahead.
Ready to vote, councilmembers Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
And Mayor Covey?
Yes, the motion passes. Thank you kindly.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
We have regular agenda item D, consideration of 2010 council education and training opportunities.
Thank you. Mr. Brunner, are you gonna lead us through this portion?
Sure, Your Honor. Uh, during the council's strategic planning retreat in December, the council, uh, discussed, uh, pre-planning which councilmembers attend, uh, which conferences, as, as the council's familiar. Uh, the National League of Cities has a conference in Washington, DC every March. Uh, in addition, they have an annual convention in the fall. Uh, the Michigan Municipal League has, uh, two conferences every year, and there's also some interest in having representative attend the Detroit Regional Chamber McEnaw, uh, Policy Conference, so I, uh, we've created a list of those events, including the dates and the locations, so that the council might discuss, um, who would represent the city at, at each one in a similar fashion, as you just appointed folks, representatives to, um, boards and commissions. Um, the, the council has a training and education, uh, travel budget in the current fiscal year. Um, there's some discussion about whether or not that would be reduced in the next year. That hasn't happened yet, um, but you could, you could choose to send, you know, one representative, two representatives. That's really, um, up to you and open for discussion, but we've prepared the list for your consideration.
I, I appreciate it, Mr. Brunner, and, and, uh, you know, in any normal year, I think we'd go down and divide these up and see who wants to go where and send people, but this is a, we're about to go into a very, very tough budget, so I appreciate you bringing this forward. Councilman, you wanted to share something?
Oh, uh, last year, I attended the, uh, National League of Cities Green Cities Conference and found it really useful. Are they having, uh, that conference this year?
I haven't heard anything about a repeat of that conference, um, yet. Uh, so I, I don't know if that's gonna become an annual thing or a biannual thing. There are a variety of other conference opportunities out there. These are kind of the, um, the core annual ones that, that happen every year, but certainly other things are gonna, are gonna come up along the way.
I have a comment. Um, I think, uh, Michigan is facing some pretty, uh, tough challenges, and I think cities need to be pretty strong advocates, not only for Ferndale, but, um, of all, um, communities in Michigan, and I think it behooves council to be out there advocating on behalf of Ferndale at, um, Michigan conferences, particular the MML, um, conferences, so, and the Detroit Regional Chamber McEnaw Policy Conference, so, um, next year is a pretty big year in terms of changeover in legislators, and this is where we can build relationships and, uh, the networking that needs to take place.
Let me ask you a question. Mr. Brunner, do you happen to know what the city budget is for council travel?
It's twenty thousand dollars in the current fiscal year.
Twenty thousand in this current year, and do you happen to know what's already been spent, or what we have left?
I, that I don't, but the city clerk may have some idea.
Okay. It's not, it's not critical that we know.
I would say there's about a third of that.
A third of it left? Okay.
Rough estimate.
I guess my thought, and I, I would not disagree with, uh, Councilwoman Piana, uh, but would suggest that it's a lot less expensive to go to a, a meeting in Dearborn, or even a meeting in East Point or Lansing than it would be to go to Denver, although I understand the value of going to national conferences.
Well, Your Honor, and I would, I would, um, agree with you and, and point out, the, the Michigan Municipal League Capitol Conference, it, it's a two-day conference, but most of the activities are on a single day. You can drive to Lansing, Mm-hmm. Not spend the night. The registration fee is probably in the nu, neighborhood of a hundred and fifty dollars for that particular conference. The, uh, the Region One Annual Meeting, which, which this year will be held in East Point, it's a day-long seminar. The registration is even cheaper. I think it might be fifty bucks on that one. And then with the, uh, the Michigan Municipal League Annual Convention, that one rotates around the state. It just so happens that this year, it's in Southeast Michigan in Dearborn, so that may be an opportunity for many more councilmembers to attend this year and, and commute to Dearborn, rather than having to go to, you know, Traverse City or somewhere where, uh, overnight stay is required.
My, my, my guess is that out of that twenty thousand dollar budget, if we eliminate all the out-of-state travel, we can cut it by probably more than two-thirds. Um, and I would, you know, we haven't had great atten, we've had, always had one councilmember attend some of these Michigan Municipal League, either the Capitol Conference or the, um, Annual Convention, but we've rarely had more than one, uh, attend, and I think it would really be beneficial to the city to have, you know, good coverage at the MML and the McEnaw Policy Conference, um, just to get ideas, but also to get the word about Ferndale out there. Um, so I, I don't think that there's any problem sending as many people as we want to the Michigan, the in-state ones. I just, um, as much as I'd love to go to Denver, uh, in the beginning of December, um, I, uh, can't justify that.
I, I would, though, suggest, um, and I completely agree, but would also suggest, um, to make colleagues that there are often scholarship options and opportunities that I don't think we've all necessarily taken advantage of in the past, you know, we haven't necessarily had to. Um, I don't entirely know how good those options are. I think you, uh, for the National League of Cities, I looked into, um, the scholarship for this Denver, um, or perhaps it was for ours in San Antonio, and they will cover your conference registration, but you are still responsible for your travel and your accommodations, which are often more expensive than your conference registration, so, um, but I believe the Michigan Municipal League has, um, scholarships as well, which might even help us send one more person, and the McEnaw, um, Chamber Conference, at least for those who are sort of in the under forty category, um, if you go with the Fusion group, you get a hugely discounted rate, which is what I did last year. Um, so I think that there are ways to, we'll dye your hair. You can come with us, Mayor.
Yeah, I wanna go in.
I, I think that there are also ways that we can be a little bit, um, more frugal
Sure.
By just putting a little bit more effort into, you know,
Sharing dri, I mean, driving?
Finding ways to save a couple hundred bucks.
Driving together?
Absolutely.
I'm not staying in a room with Lennon, though, that's for sure. No, just playing, but I'm not. All right. Do you, uh, councilmembers, what's your pleasure? Do you wanna go down these to see who might be interested? Do you wanna vote on any of this? Do you wanna wait till the budget comes? What are your thoughts?
Well, my thought is, I'm, I'm sorry, Councilman.
I'm just saying that I don't plan on flying to, I'm not gonna waste, spend the money to go to, uh, DC and Denver. They're completely out. Those look like, appear to be the only two that I have concerns about. Everything else is in-state, so I can decide on those as the time approaches. I can't tell you right now if I can go in April or September. I'd have to wait and see.
Yeah, I'm not certain, you know, I've gone to the Capitol Conference probably, I think, three times, and we always get great updates on Michigan law and, uh, policy initiatives, so, um, I'd be willing to commit, I mean, I'm not sure we have to take a vote on these things, but maybe just so Cheryl can plan in advance. I'd be interested in going to the Capitol Conference, uh, spend some time at the, uh, Annual Convention of the MML, and, uh, I've never been to the McEnaw Policy Conference. I'd like to check that out.
And, uh, my preference is, I've been chomping at the bit to go to the Detroit Regional Chamber McEnaw Policy Conference through the Suburbs Alliance for six years, and, um, we've been unable to afford to send, um, anybody. Um, uh, so, um, that is something that I would, uh, support going, and I could share a room with Kate.
Yep, join Fusion.
And to, I'm too old.
What? No, no, you're not.
No, you're not.
I'm not. Um, and of course, all MML. I, I'll go to any, really.
The local, okay.
The local ones. The local ones.
Well, and it's very good for new council members. I'd like to send you to one of the national conferences, too, maybe in the future. Well, and, you know, there's no reason that one of us, if one of us wanted to go to a conference and could cover some of their own expenses, that could happen as well.
Yeah, I, I plan to go to the Mackinac, uh, Chamber Conference. It is turning much more into a, uh, political conference than business leaders, um, and it was just fantastic networking with all of our state's, um, representatives and several of our national representatives last year. So, um, I'll defer the MML to Scott and perhaps to Melanie, 'cause I think that you do that with work anyway.
The last thing I wanted to share was that I appreciated, um, Councilwoman Baker and Councilwoman-elect Piana going to, or Councilwoman Piana last Thursday, um, driving through the snowstorm and going to meet with Congressman Levin at his, uh, at his meeting there on the east, in Macomb County. Um, you know, I used to think, and went to all the Washington DC conferences because we got to meet with our senators and our congressmen, and I thought it was very important, and it was, and so we used to bring back grants and things, but the truth is, you don't need to go to Washington to meet with Sandy or Senator Stamenow or Senator Levin. There are ways we can meet with their staff here in, even in Ferndale. We can invite them to come to our place, make them pay for it. So, um, I'm not sensing that we need to go down this list then any further. I hear that there's certain members interested in certain things. I might be interested in the Lansing one or the Mackinac one. So, we... Go ahead.
I was just saying, I think we're all in agreement. One in six are basically out this year.
I'm not hearing anyone say that they would like to, uh, or need to go to the National League of Cities in Denver or to the DC. Is that correct? Again, unless you wanna find your own funding or, you know...
...become independently wealthy.
It could happen. All right, then, uh, we, I'm not hearing any motions, then we need no further action on those items. Madam Clerk, what's next?
We are back to Consent Agenda Item 10G, which is...
Printing.
...approval of the invoice for the Markers Group for setting up and printing the DPW calendar.
Yeah, Councilman Lennon, what do you want us to bring up? Mr. Fotidis?
Yes, please.
Byron? Mr. Fotidis, Director of the Department of Public Works, sir. Could you introduce the item on the printing of the calendars?
Byron, the reason why I pulled it is, um, it's an eight, eighty-three-hundred-dollar bill that's coming to us now, and I believe these have already been purchased and mailed out?
Yes. It's a, it's a contractor that we have used for many years. Uh, we've developed a relationship with that contractor, and, um, it's not just a matter of printing out a newsletter. This has been a... We started this in, I think, 2005. So, it's, it's working with a, uh, trying to find out from other cities who they work with and so forth. The, this is done by the Parks Foreman Supervisor. He does not have all the expertise. We don't have a public relations department in this city, so we rely very heavily on a company that we can consult with. Uh, this company had done our quarterly solid waste newsletter, and then we decided to put it in calendar format. Um, the, um, the accounting department, uh, this year said that, um, as, that this year we, uh, we should've gotten permission ahead of time.
Exactly why you're up here.
Pardon me?
That's exactly why I called you up, right? Anything over twenty-five-hundred dollars has to come to council. You made an eighty-three-hundred-dollar purchase without council approval. And plus, this business is in Northville. There's not a business in town that can handle this?
I don't know if there is a business. When I was Parks Recreation Director for many years, uh, we would go, uh, we would go outside the city. There were just, uh, there weren't anybody inside who could do the Parks and Recreation flyer. The Recreation Department uses this company. I'm sure that their brochure is more than twenty-five-hundred dollars. Uh, this company, the city, has paid this bill, uh, has paid similar bills. I'm not trying to be argumentative. This is, I have, I, I, I understand that, uh, the accounting department has said that this should be submitted to council. I understand that. Those are the rules. This is being submitted to council. Next calendar year, we'll have to figure out how we're going to have to handle this.
Yeah, come to us first.
Well, whether, whether we come to you and say, this is a contractor we've been using for many years, uh, the price continues to go down because they know how to lay this thing out, we're not experts at this. Uh, excuse me, let me just make one comment. So, it's a question whether we come back to you and say that this company provides a quality product, we have experience with them, uh, they know what we want, or we go out and attempt to come up with some specifications, and we go and we try to explain to some firms that we don't know that this is the kind of product we have, and we'll see where it goes, whether we do it on a bid basis or on a RFP basis.
Okay, um, the, the company you use is somewhat of an issue with me.
Pardon me?
The company you use is somewhat of an issue with me, but I understand if you have a relationship with them and they know our program, that's fine. What I have an issue with is eighty-three-hundred dollars being spent without the five of us taking a look at it.
And, and the accounting department is informing of this. That's why it came to you. Next year, we're not going to inform it and provide it to you after the fact. We'll find some way of providing it to council, whether we wanna continue with this company and see if we can get a price, 'cause this is a time and material. This is more than just printing. It's a lot of the time that they spend with us trying to lay this thing out. So, it's a question whether we come back to council and say, uh, we'd like to do this. This is an estimated price, because we don't know, uh, you know, I couldn't tell you, for example, when we were gonna take, when we were gonna start this this year, that this would be eight thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars. Uh, in the past, it's been more than that, but every year it's gone down because they know how to work with us, they know what we want, they're very professional in the layout, and under the, um, it's been rated very highly by the residents. So, we know what we have to do next year.
Okay, yeah, if you can bring us a guest to bid in the future, that'd be fine. If it's done, we have to pay the bill, but, uh, you know the policy we have.
Well, when I'm informed that this is how the city wants to handle it, then we go for it, and we handle it that way.
Well, maybe Mr. Brunner needs to send an email out to all the department heads reminding them of our policy.
Yeah, we do.
And the use of in-town businesses, when appropriate. Thank you. I'm satisfied.
No, but I appreciate you bringing it up, Councilman Lennon. They're violating policy, and we have to vote on amounts over twenty-five-hundred. I don't know what would happen if the council voted no tonight on that particular invoice. We'll see what happens.
Be in Northville Court.
Madam Clerk?
Um, do we have...
I'm sorry. We need a motion.
I move to approve the invoice of eight thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars to the Markers Group of Northville for setting up and printing ten thousand nine hundred copies of the 2010 DPW calendar in charge of the expense of the sanitation fund, printing and publishing. Count number two-two-six, triple zero, nine hundred.
Support.
I heard Councilman Galloway second Councilman Lennon's motion to okay that invoice. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
And Covey?
No. Pass this score to one. Next item, Madam Clerk.
A council appointee report from the city manager.
Thanks, Your Honor. Um, tonight I'm gonna give you a progress report on goals and objectives that the council adopted, uh, back in March. Um, I'll try to move through quickly and hit the highlights that have changed since the last report that I provided in October. Uh, goal number one is to maintain strong financial position and fiscal discipline. Uh, there's been a lot of progress made on this goal. Um, the one that is remaining for the current fiscal year is, um, to wrap up the goal-setting work, uh, that council started at the strategic planning retreat, um, in December. I have a draft report on that, and we'll bring forward goals for council's consideration at the next, uh, meeting on January twenty-fifth. Goal number two, continue infrastructure improvements, um, facilitating the municipal building renovation expansion project. Uh, the project team today interviewed two of the design-build firms, and will interview two more on Wednesday. Um, the council will consider project financing on Monday, January twenty-fifth, and then again on Monday, February first, if necessary, and then we'll deliberate on, uh, the project itself, uh, at the regular council meeting on Monday, uh, February eighth, and then again on February twenty-second, if necessary. Goal number three was to review and prioritize, uh, city services. Um, this was, uh, completed at the city council strategic planning retreat in December, and again, I'll be bringing forward that report to council for your consideration at the January twenty-fifth, uh, meeting. We'll be providing an update of the city's long-term financial plan, uh, later this month, uh, which will reflect, uh, December thirtieth, two thou... December, the taxable value from December thirty-first, two thousand and nine. Goal number four, improving operational efficiency and effectiveness. Um, there's a number of objectives under this goal, uh, that involve potentially using technical consultants to complete a number of projects, such as creating a comprehensive set of desk procedures, initiating an operational and organizational assessment of divisions under the manager's direction, creating an operational improvement plan for those departments, and facilitating the, uh, creation of succession plans. To make a long progress report a little shorter, I'm going, when we review the council's goals, um, on January twenty-fifth, we can talk about these further, and I'll ask for more specific, uh, direction. But what I'm going to propose at this point is, uh, that we hold off on the desk procedures and, and deal with that on a position-by-position basis as necessary as we have people, um, leaving city government that, that we have to, uh, replace. I've also asked the department heads in City Hall to prepare a reorganization plan, to reorganize how we do business in City Hall to decrease expenditures to the greatest extent possible. I think that's going to address, um, objectives number three and four a little bit more, uh, directly. And then finally, as far as succession planning goes, uh, the vast majority of those departments are really too small, um, to support extensive, uh, succession planning. So, I think that's something else that we can deal with on a, on a position-by-position basis when we talk about the council's goals for the coming year. In addition to those projects, there were some other things that we discussed back in June at a special council meeting, when we first started talking about the, the budget difficulties that lie ahead. Um, we talked about conducting a user fee analysis, a cash flow analysis, um, budget and finance training for the council, the citizen satisfaction survey, and revising, um, the civil service rules. Again, we'll discuss this further, but I'm gonna suggest that the council go ahead with a user fee analysis, as well as a cost allocation plan, to make sure that we are, uh, recovering the full cost for the services that we provide. Um, Finance Director Hugh Banks, uh, is going to conduct a cash flow analysis internally. Um, we have found a, a trainer from the Michigan Municipal League to conduct the budget and finance training, um, in February to give the council more or less a refresher course heading into the budgeting process. Of course, the citizen satisfaction survey's already been completed. And, um, revising, amending the civil service rules is something that, that will increase efficiency to some extent. It's not likely to save a lot of money in the short term, so that's something, um, that we're going to attempt to do internally after the, the budget is adopted. Finally, on to goal number five, which is expanding intergovernmental and intra-governmental relations. Uh, you'll see a number of, uh, meetings, uh, that I've participated in with organizations like the Michigan Municipal League, Oakland County City Managers Association. There's also some discussion here in the memo about meetings that I've had, um, exploring opportunities for inter-local government, uh, cooperation. Uh, the police chiefs and the fire chiefs have been meeting to discuss, uh, consolidated dispatch, uh, late last year. Um, meeting very routinely these days with the city managers of our neighboring communities, and we're, uh, pursuing opportunities for collaboration as well. So, that's my report for this quarter, Your Honor. I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Councilman.
Um, city manager, in going through your report here, uh, I want to get a little further information on the desk procedures and the succession planning. In your notes regarding, you know, our goal of facilitate the creation of comprehensive set of desk procedures for positions in the several departments under your direction, you indicate that staff doesn't have a capacity to do it, um, and, you know, I guess that's one thing, but I'm not sure whether or not it's needed because of, uh, early retirements, possible, you know, uh, staff reductions through other means. To me, that would seem to make it more important, not less important, but perhaps you're thinking something different.
Well, what I'm proposing is, is that we deal with it on a case-by-case basis. If there are positions, uh, that we are know, know are gonna be vacated through an early retirement program, we'll have a longer lead time on those, and we can deal with desk procedures on that, on a position-by-position basis, rather than trying to do every position in, in every department, just focusing on the immediate need.
And do you think, uh, the case-by-case basis, after we've announced that we're eliminating someone's position or encouraging them to get early retirement or laying them off, you know, whatever, is gonna yield a good product?
Well, it wouldn't be up to the, up to the individual employee to complete it. At that point, we would bring in a, a technical writer, somebody, um, to actually do it. The supervisors, um, would be involved. So, in the case of an early retirement, I don't think that that employee would be adversarial or adverse to helping us document what, what they do. If we get, you know, to the point, uh, where we're in a position where we have to lay people off, that's a different story, but that would be a situation that I would wanna get out ahead, in front of as we go through the budgeting process.
So, your thought as far as accomplishing these things is to have, uh, an outside third-party draft the desk procedures rather than have the employee draft them and then have them reviewed by you or their manager or somebody else?
Yeah, it, it would be, it would be an outsider who is actually writing the procedures. They'd, they'd obviously be coming in, observing what the employees are, are doing, um, in that case, but the employees wouldn't have to take the expensive time away from their day job to actually sit and write them. That way, whatever product we get will be more consistent. If we ask ten different people to write a procedure, you're gonna get ten different products. If you have one person write them, they're gonna be more consistent throughout the organization, have the same information, the same format, but obviously, they'll have to get input from the individual employees and, uh, their supervisors.
And that's how municipalities, other municipalities handle this, or... Every place I've ever been, when we do succession planning, you write up your own thing, perhaps with some guidelines from the boss, but, um...
Well...
Do you think this technique to be successful or useful?
Yeah, the, um, it can be. It can also be unsuccessful. It depends on the consultant that you select and how, why you manage them. Um, you know, the city of Ferndale hired the Michigan Municipal League at some point in the past to write an employee handbook and update job descriptions. That didn't get finished, um, so within the last two years, we have conducted those internally. Having gone through that process of trying to write an employee handbook internally, and that project having taken two years, you know, what I'm suggesting is that we just really don't have the capacity to do it internally. We need some outside help, um, but we are gonna have to manage that person to make sure we get a quality product.
All right. Very. Thank you. Any other questions for the city manager for now? All right. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
We are on to Councilia's on reports of Fannie.
I have one item for the Eight Mile Boulevard Association. It's kind of exciting. Tammy Salisbury called me last week and asked if I would be willing to sit on the executive committee of the Board of Directors of the Eight Mile Boulevard Association, and I said yes.
You got that?
Thank you. Um, and she also had good news in the sense that, uh, there's a lot of progress being made on that, I think it's called the Gateway Project, the Myers and some other stores being built at the corner of Eight Mile and Woodward that is moving along, and she believes it's actually going to happen. So, that's kind of exciting. There'll be some spillover, hopefully in a good way, towards terms of business and shopping opportunities in our area. What other items do members have to share on the other organizations?
I have something from the Suburbs Alliance.
Please.
I just wanted to give an update. Um, the Michigan Suburbs Alliance has been looking for new office space to move out of City Hall for the last, um, three months, and we are looking at many properties along Ferndale. We hope to be, um, relocated, uh, by April, um, but we are having some difficulty finding what fits our needs, and so, um, we are expanding our search, um, beyond, uh, Ferndale and Pleasant Ridge and perhaps Royal Oak and somewhere in Wayne County. perhaps Royal Oak, and somewhere in Wayne County. So, just wanted to let you know, the search continues, but our main priority and goal is to be in Ferndale and along the Woodward corridor. Transit and access to bus routes is very important to our staff and interns.
On that note, I have a quick update and a request for some assistance, I guess, from the Transportation Riders United.
Yes, ma'am.
I spoke with Megan Owens, actually Brendan Frey, who was speaking with us earlier. He and I attended a Millennial Mayor's Congress outreach and publicity meeting. We've put together a group of both Congress representatives and other people from around the community to try and get the word out about the Congress and determine some future steps that can make it more beneficial to cities. And Megan Owens, the Director of Transportation Riders United, was at that meeting. She is the Hazel Park delegate for the Millennial Mayor's Congress. And Megan and her staff are currently trying to determine, and they're getting different answers from municipalities, county authorities, and state authorities, exactly what cities are currently opted in to the smart millage need to do to stay opted in. Cities like Ferndale that currently participate in that millage, we find it to be of value to our residents, obviously, and our residents do pay that, that smart millage. I, at least, I assume some others up here would want to remain a part of that millage structure and support the smart system. So, I wondered if I could ask of the city manager and/or the city attorney if you could maybe help us make sure that if we do need to take action, to remain opted in to the smart millage, that we take it whenever we need to? Megan may have more information on exactly what the statute is and what the timeline is. I just don't want us to miss a window and accidentally opt out.
All right. All set? Okay, thank you. Any of the other items there? Semcog, Woodward Avenue Action. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Call to council, Your Honor.
Call to council. Police Chief Mike Kitchen, anything to share?
Nothing, Your Honor, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. Fire Chief Schmidt?
Nothing tonight, thank you, Your Honor.
Byron Fotidides, DPW Director.
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor, thank you.
Nothing else? Mr. Bruner, city manager, anything else to share?
Uh, it sounds like we got a good thing going, I'll keep it up.
All right. Very good. Council, Dan Chris, city attorney. You've been very quiet lately.
I have been.
All right, all good on the legal front?
Yes, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Baker?
Um, first, a welcome to my good friend, and now my colleague, Melanie Piana. I am so excited that you are up here and that you are filling Tameko's seat. I know that she had intended to be here this evening. She is at home with the flu, which started this weekend, so several plans canceled this weekend, and now tonight. And also, just a big thank you, because I was asked a question that I had absolutely no idea how to deal with last week by some very longtime family friends who had a rat problem in their neighborhood. It was not emanating from their home, it was emanating from a neighbor's home. I asked questions of both Marsha Shear and her team in the CDS Department, Byron and Sean and his team at the DPW, and the questions were passed on to Officer Waller, our animal control officer at the police department. All responded, both to me and immediately to the situation, to take care of the code enforcement issues, as well as to help the residents with what had become a pretty serious infestation problem. So, just thank you for working together so quickly and diligently to resolve something that I certainly didn't want to get directly involved in.
Oh.
Not good with rodents. Thank you very, very much for helping to keep our, our community safe. That's it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Appreciate that effort. Councilman Lennon, what do you have to give us?
I'd like to welcome all you guys back. Both of you, and welcome you.
Thank you.
Okay, congratulations, good job. I really don't, yes, I do. Gary Safia, Assistant Principal over at Ferndale High School, lost his mother this weekend. I'd like to offer condolences to Gary and his family. The Safia family, as all you well know, have been involved in school district. Far back is when Chief Kitchen was going there. That's how far back.
Wow.
Wow, that's right. So, yeah. I do remember, in fact, Gary's dad was superintendent of Ferndale's school.
We can prepare a resolution?
Wish we will. I will be working with the clerk on that.
Very good. Councilman Galloway?
I'm just welcomed to Melanie. Look forward to working with you over the next four years. That's it.
Very good. Councilwoman Melanie Piana?
I can't express how excited I am to be here, and so I, I'm just ecstatic to be here, and I look forward to working with all of you over the next four years. I do have an announcement to make. I haven't heard it at all at the city council meeting tonight, so let me know if I'm jumping the gun. The, because planning and zoning is at the heart, you know, of my job. I just wanted to announce that the Planning Commission is having a public hearing on January 21st at 7:00 PM, and the Planning Commission will be reviewing the new zoning code updates. And that will be a pretty interactive conversation about what changes will be, what new regulations will be, that council will be voting on along our major corridors and residential streets. If you go to the city's website, there is a, you can download the draft ordinance, a draft of the zoning map of proposed changes. You can even email your input online if you can't make the meeting, and there's a little section about what has been changed, and what the major priorities are in the zoning ordinance. So, I will be in attendance that night, so learning and listening as well as everybody else in the audience. So, I encourage you to come and tell your network to attend the zoning ordinance public hearing on January 21st, 7:00 PM.
Melanie did my job for me. I totally should have announced that. No, thank you. And also, because I know we have at least one member of the media in the audience tonight, there will be a press release going out probably tomorrow that Commissioner Voorhees and I are working on. So, Jeremy, if you've got any questions, hang around for a minute.
Very good. Councilwoman Piana, we had a message today from Doug Brown, your father, who wishes to congratulate you. He was not able to be here, but he wanted to send his respect and love. So, that message came into the city. Also, congratulations to you. You're very photogenic. Larry Mills, who is the unofficial Ferndale photographer of the city, was here earlier tonight, snapped your picture, already has had it developed and framed to be presented to you.
Wow.
Larry does this to all the council members.
Two or four.
Councilwoman Baker mentioned, and it's a good idea, that maybe the city, if there's a little tiny petty cash fund that we, after all the years that he's done this, thousands of dollars' worth of photography for the city, that maybe we can buy him some, I don't even know what they use anymore, film, or, they don't use film anymore, do they?
Ink.
Buy him some memory or something?
Paper.
Paper, whatever it is they use. So, maybe we can, we can talk about that, but congratulations and welcome.
Thank you, thanks, Larry.
I want to thank the, the Brownie Troop and the Cub Scout Troop that came tonight and helped us inaugurate the new council. I think that's important. And also, Father Ed from St. James Catholic Church. Some really good news in an otherwise typically bad economic series of announcements that we always get, but last month, five cities in Michigan turned away the money they were awarded to deal with the foreclosure crisis. Holly Township, White Lake Township, and Lake Orion Village, I'm sorry, those three, Lake Orion Village, turned back one million dollars in grants that was dealing with the foreclosures, that they didn't feel they had the staff to deal with the complexities of the program. So, that's bad for them. What's good for us is that that million dollars is coming back to us. Hazel Park, Oak Park, Madison Heights, Ferndale, and Royal Oak Township will be getting the balance of those funds. That's pretty neat. That's good news for us. Ferndale gets one-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-three additional dollars to work on fixing up foreclosed homes. So, congratulations to the staff. Will you thank Marsha Shear for us? I'm sure she had a role in that. And the last thing I want to share again is that the Blues Festival is coming up. Even with the bad economic times, we've managed to exceed all, all sponsorship levels this year, including Paramount Bank that's come back. So, that's coming up in about less than three weeks. We do rely on volunteers that raises money for Ferndale Youth Assistance and Michigan AIDS Coalition. You'll be getting more information on the Blues Festival. More than fifty concerts so far have been scheduled at more than two dozen venues, lots of sponsorships, and the neat thing about it is, it is a partnership. The DDA's involved, the Chamber of Commerce is involved, the Recreation Department is helping with transportation, so thank you all. If there's, yes, yes, sir.
Did you not go?
Yeah, he went.
Really?
Yeah. Thanks, Councilman Lennon.
Thanks, I'm gonna have fun.
Hey, Doc.
But what's not that important, because I didn't hear you.
I heard it, it was important, and you just weren't listening. No further business, the meeting is adjourned.